Our in tune music, I just wanted to point out, they were able, you know, with a little kind of slower time, they were able to turn in a bunch of their marching instruments and stuff. I talked with Kyle and so they had quite a bit of service done, so it's a little higher than normal. And then about a little further down, our payroll clearing there, our December, and that does include the retention stipend that you guys approved. Thank y'all. On page 10, again, we have an item that'll be reimbursed with Treferas, our Chromebook carts. And then we move down onto our credit card purchases. That'll continue through page 11 and the top of page 12. Any questions on those? Okay. Page 13 is our supplemental bills, of course, being kind of a quick turnaround and shorter month. This is a shorter list here. We did have a large bill with CADCO, again reimbursable, that is our, some floor plans and different architect fees going with that. Midway Plumbing, we have had, we did have to replace a boiler at the high school. Just, I mean, things kind of, with the break, they did some work here at the kindergarten with kids being gone. That was a larger bill. And then relocating an ice machine, so all of that was coming in at once, but able to get that work done.
Is that stuff that, like, it's gonna work in the budget, or can it be, is it, does it count as like an upgrade to where?
Yeah, so that's, you know, we are in that, we're renovations. I guess that's gonna be a question I have for Jeff. Sorry, Jeff's been working back there, but if we, if we have, like, some repairs and part of renovations for, like, kitchens and so forth, I would guess that'd be reimbursable.
It would, yeah, that's right.
I mean, you'll make fun that it's not necessary at all.
Wouldn't be necessarily, but I would say this, I, I just think we need to protect our general fund as much as we can. I know Jenna would probably tell you to be careful early on, but at the end of the day, it's in the pot of money and we have access to it, so.
Okay, on page 14, our cash balance as of December 31st. Like Mr. Light mentioned earlier, we are still earning that 5.3%, or 3.5%. We did have a larger, our larger tax deposit at the end of the month, so that was good. Okay, and then over on page 15 is our expense report. I'm sorry, I was a little sick last time and wasn't thinking, I think Andy, you had asked me about thirty, function 32, and so that is our mentors care that gets charged there. So, I was gonna point out, function 34, you know, once we're able to reimburse buses, of course, we'd be more at 30% of our budget, a little closer in line, because that's $450,000 with that bus order. Plant and maintenance, that does include, it's a little higher, but we have been paying, you know, we're paying overtime and we're really watching that, and there's been a little bit more than maybe was thought about, but it also includes our building insurance that, of course, we all know all of that went up. Revenue on page 16. This one's pretty straightforward. Not a whole lot to point out here. Again, I know we've talked about the gifts and requests, and that is that DCOA funding that we've rolled into this year, and are getting to use it. There's any other questions?
Are those one or two buses still on schedule to be here?
We haven't heard anything to change yet.
No, nothing, they haven't said anything to change.
I, I think bottom line was, we think we're gonna get them in March, is that right?
Uh, April. They've gotta go to the air conditioner, you know, then once they get out, one of them was already, was on the assembly line coming out. So, once it comes out, they have to both go to the, you know, they get an aftermarket air conditioner and then how long that takes, and then they get the wrap, final wrap, and then they'll be here. They're in Houston though, I guess, that's where they'll end up.
No other questions? Thank you, guys.
Paying bills.
Bonds.
Yes, ma'am. So, we're, tonight, we are going to be considering authorizing and issuing the building bonds and then appointing a pricing officer, delegating authority to approve the sale of the bonds. Nick Bulash is here. Nick, as I mentioned, is our financial advisor. Nick, if you want to come up first to talk a little bit about parameters and how that works and...
Yes, sir. Can I run out to run through real fast?
Yeah.
Thank you, sir. My name's Nick Bulash from Hilltop Securities.
As Mr. Light pointed out, also here is Jeff Golbus from McCall, Parker, and Horton. He is the city, or excuse me, the district's bond counsel. I'm the district's financial advisor that helps price structure, act as your fiduciary on the bond transaction. Before you tonight is adoption of a parameter order. And before I get into this presentation, this is the first time the district has considered a parameter order, because it's the first time the district has been legally allowed to consider a parameter order. The last times that we've sold bonds, we have had to target and sell and price the day of a school board meeting. This gives us a little bit more flexibility. We don't have to price the day of a school board meeting. We can actually go into day-to-day mode and, subject to parameters being met, which the board will determine, we can then price the transaction at that time. So, we don't have to wait for, you know, the first, the second Monday or the first Monday of the month or, excuse me, Tuesday. I forgot what day it is. It is, it is Monday. Wow. So, you know, and the whole point of this is, we don't have a crystal ball. We don't know the best possible day in the market, but what this allows us to do is to avoid the bad days in the market. If there's a day that we have slated that has a bunch of school district bonds pricing on that day, well, you know, it may not be the best thing to price our bonds on that day. We'll either price the day before or after, just to try to manage the runway, so to speak. But to go into this presentation, just real quick, three things I want to discuss. Market conditions, again, the parameter bond order and those proposed parameters, which is what you're considering tonight, and just a quick review on the plan of finance. Market conditions, I'm on slide two. There's two graphs on this page, and this is a graph of what's called the Bond Buyer Index. It is an index that shows general market movements in the municipal bond market. So, it's kind of like our Standard and Poor's 500 for municipal bonds. The big white inset chart shows what this index has done since 1981 to today. That red line going across the bottom, that's the current rate. So, you can see on a historical basis, we are pretty darn good, even though all you hear about is the Fed is increased rates, rates, interest rates are high, interest rates are high. The municipal bond market's functioning quite well. And the only time we were below that red line really substantially was during COVID, when the government was throwing so much quantitative easing at the, the money supply. Most importantly, I want you to look at that blue inset chart. That's what this index has done over the past two months. We have seen a, a phenomenal rally, meaning interest rates have gone down in the municipal bond market, almost 1%. So, when I was running these numbers back in August and during the summertime, before you were calling this bond election, we were in a much different interest rate market, and I was already being a little bit conservative. So, at this point, we are better from an interest rate standpoint than what we evaluated during the bond election planning, so that's good news. And I just wanted to show you this, because it's staggering that how quickly rates have come down again into a very reasonable mode. Turning to the next page, this is just an overview of the parameter bond order, and I know Jeff will come up here in a minute to discuss it in greater detail. But again, the primary benefit of a parameter bond order is that the transaction is in day-to-day mode. So, once we get it set, that we get the offering documents out on the street, we can basically monitor the market and make sure we're, again, avoiding those bad days. And we're not trapped or stuck coming and pricing the day of a school board meeting. It's allowed under section 1371 of Texas Government Code, and the board delegates a final pricing officer, subject to certain parameters being met. And the, the pricing officer can only agree, and Jeff will make sure, is this is the law as well, that every single parameter has to be met, not just a couple, but not one. And if we set, let's say we set an interest rate parameter that's too aggressive, and the market starts to run away with us, from us, then the only way we can change that parameter is to come back before you had a school board meeting to reauthorize the parameter order. Again, this is on the last bullet point, this is the first time the district's been able to do this, because it's the first time the district's been legally allowed to do it. The proposed parameters, and I'm on slide four, that are in the order for your consideration, delegated pricing officers, the superintendent, maximum interest rate, I put 5.25%. I'm just putting something that's higher, likely higher than it should be, just knowing that I don't want to have to come back before you guys if the rates start running away. And I can kind of go through the, the process for pricing to in a minute. The current market is about 4.47. That has a little bit of cushion in it, because I've ran these numbers back before New Year's Day. I think interest rates have come up a little bit, but we're still probably in that same range. Maximum principal amount is $186 million. Maximum maturity dates, February 15th, 2054. These are 30-year bonds, similar to what was in the, for the bond election planning. The expiration of the parameter authority is January 8th, 2025, although we anticipate pricing these here in the next couple of weeks, but that's just the max allowed by law. So, we don't price this in a vac, in a vacuum. We don't just call up Mr. Light and say, oh, we priced your bonds today, and here's the rate. So, what we do is, we determine the pricing date, which at this time, it's, we're assuming January 17th, and I have a timetable in this. It might get moved up a day, because I'm hearing, already hearing that there's some other school districts pricing on the 17th. So, we determine that pricing date, then we evaluate market conditions as we get closer to that date. And if, and if it's in line with expectations and what's been presented to the board, then my recommendation to Mr. Light would, would be, I think we should proceed. We're within our model, we're within our projections. It's not, again, it's not one of those things where the maximum interest rate's five, 5.25%, and I call him, call Mr. Light and say, we priced your bonds at 5.24%. It's, that's not how, how it works. So, if we're, you know, within the range of where we want to be, then we determine to move forward at that time.
Now, we can, we can possibly, possibly on a short maturity, can we like the buses and the technology and stuff like that, because we don't have a 30-year maturity.
Yes, 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 sir. And I, that's a great segue to the next slide, if I can, no, you, you're great. I, I would, I would, I would tell you that, you know, brilliant minds think alike, but I don't want to insult you. So, the next slide, the plan of finance, and again, these are similar assumptions to what was assumed during the election. It's a similar plan of finance, but our projections have ended up being a little bit better, which I think will, will be better than our projections, excuse me. So, we're structured with a 30-year repayment term. However, $25 million of this transaction is paid off in the first 10 years. So, we have more than enough principal being amortized in the early part of this bond issue that accounts for the buses, the technology, FF and E, those types of things that are short-lived assets. We're mindful of that. It's actually state law, and Jeff Golbus will probably have me prepare some schedules to prove that up as well. But yes, sir. So, those, we are, we are mindful of those short-lived assets. So, the 2024 bonds are structured to be within the 50-cent INS tax rate, which was communicated to voters. But here's the catch, is because we're issuing right now, we're using 2024 values. And so, we're basing our projections on 2024 values, meaning the values that are on the ground right now. So, it's very likely that if we price these bonds to a 50-cent tax rate based on today's values, that once the district grows, which I expect it to grow, its tax base, it's, it's likely you won't have to levy a 50-cent tax rate next year. But we won't know until we get those certified values next summer. And it was one thing Mr. Light and I talked about, so we could project some growth and sell a little bit more perhaps, but it's putting the district at some risk, because if that growth does not materialize, then suddenly, shoot, how are we gonna make up for that, that, those excess payments? So, we're being conservative with our first issuance out of the gate. And again, if the district's tax base grows, which we anticipate it will, it won't, you won't need to levy 50 cents for next year. So, the remaining voter authorization, which is 54 million, I'm estimating that you all could likely issue that in 2026, pending construction needs. I mean, you may still have some unspent bond proceeds from this transaction, but based on the, the district's tax base has grown over 7% historically, and even assuming less than that, we could afford that, that remaining authorization here in about a couple of years. So, turning to the next slide, and I'll be quick on this. This is kind of how the, the watch is made, but I wanted, I want to show you, again, this is what the assumption is. You have numbers at the very top, calling out the various columns. Columns four and five, your existing bonds. Columns six through 10, those are the new bonds. Columns 11 and 12, that's the, the total bonds, and then, of course, the tax rate, or INS tax rate in column 12. But if you look in column three, that 7.77%, that is the actual value growth for this year. We're assuming no growth thereafter. And if you look all the way over in column 12, you see we're right up to that 50-cent range. So, you may say, well, what happens if we do grow more than anticipated or more than being flat? There's a lot on this page, by the way. I'll, I'll flip past it. There's a graphical representation. The next page shows, that blue line shows, it's a graphical representation of the tax rate, assuming no growth. That purple line is a graphical representation based on 7% growth for a couple of years. Again, the district has averaged over 7% for the past 10 years, 5% for a couple of years. It's called out there in the bottom in red font, 3% through 34, then no growth thereafter. And so, you can see how the INS tax rate reacts as the tax base grows. And so, as, as the tax base grows, if you, if you turn to the next slide, I've now layered in, that's that remaining $56 million in, in the green dotted line. So, you can see the tax rate would then bump back up again at the next issuance, and then it would slowly decline as that transaction is paid off and the tax base grows. So, that's how graphically the plan of finance works. I didn't want to just bore you with a bunch of numbers on a spreadsheet, but interest rates are better than what we've assumed. We're assuming the same tax base assumptions from the bond election, which we thought were a bit conservative. But again, we can still, it appears we can afford the full bond election within the next couple of years. And finally, the last page is just a timetable of where we are. The board meeting tonight, we have a rating call with Moody's on Wednesday. We have a diligence call with some underwriters on Thursday, and then we anticipate having the rating and the document finalized on January 16th, in order to put that out on the street, make that document, call a preliminary official statement available to any bond investors, and then looking at pricing. It sounds, I'm guessing now it's gonna be January 23rd. It's, might be the day before the 24th, but subject to change based on the market. But I can answer any questions that you may have. I went very quickly through that. I know I skipped over the tax rate analysis, the very detailed, all the numbers, but I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, or I could yield the floor to Jeff Golbus as well.
Maybe I missed it, but why is this the first time we have a legal authority that utilizes sales method?
And I was just clarifying with Jeff to make sure I had my facts correct. The rule is you have to have at least $100 million of principal outstanding, or you have unauthorized, or, excuse me, authorized but unissued bonds of at least $100 million that you're issuing. So, with this bond election, you now qualify with the voter authority. And I will say that the vast majority of school districts sell doing a parameter order, just because otherwise you would, most school districts meet on Monday nights or the third Tuesday, and it would just be a lot of bonds pricing on those specific days. And it's been a, a really good tool for school districts to use.
Thank you for that information.
Yes, yes.
With that said, Jeff, would you like to come up and kind of tell us, tell us what we're gonna be doing here?
I'll be even reefer than Nick, because he gets, to talk about the numbers and all that, it's much more exciting than hearing from the lawyer. Since we were last here, very thrilled that y'all had a good election. I know we didn't get that, that second prop. Considering what we saw statewide, it was really good for y'all. There were a lot of frustrated districts, some very happy districts. I would consider y'all being in the happy category, so pleased for y'all. As Nick said, with this parameters order, 100 million in outstanding, including this proposed issue, also rated one of the four highest rating categories, is the other requirement y'all meet. Years ago, I had a district like y'all that finally made the leap, and superintendent said, so we're with the big boys now, and you, you are. So, hitting that, it's an arbitrary number the legislature made up many years ago. I don't know why, 100 million. But in, in a market like this, it gives y'all great flexibility, and it's a really good tool to have. So, real quick, Nick covered everything very thoroughly. Mr. Light's been really busy. He was doing some homework for me over the weekend. This'll be a tax-exempt bond issue. That's always what we want for municipalities and cities. Brings our cost of borrowing down significantly, and so Mr. Light was working with me, making sure we can give our legal opinion when we close, that the interest on these bonds are tax-exempt. Once we price, as Nick said, we, we kind of put the whole transaction in a box. And so, once we hit pricing on that date, all communicate, once Nick's done and everything looks good, and Nick knows to look over those parameters as well, we'll send Mr. Light formal, not formal, it actually is just an email, fleshing out what the parameters the board set, how we hit them. I'll have a document that will memorialize all that, and all it takes is Mr. Light to say, we accept the terms of the underwriting, which is what the underwriters will do. And then we're done with pricing. So, that's how the parameters, everybody just make sure that we hit those. As I say, we don't let superintendents go rogue, so they'll, Mr. Light will stay within the parameters. And then after that, I'll submit the transaction to the Texas Attorney General's office. They are responsible for reviewing all bond transactions in the state. So, really, if we send a, a bond proceedings down there and we haven't triple-checked the parameters, they'll catch it, and they won't approve those bonds. So, that's worst-case scenario. That office has become a little more challenging in the last 18 months, but I'm not worried in the case of Wiley ISD. As Mr. Light said, I've got a number of documents, just because once we price, it's, it's kind of a fast-moving day. The underwriters have investors that have bought those bonds. They kind of want to know ASAP, can I let these trades go? And so, we'll communicate with Mr. Light, but I like to have those documents in hand so we don't have mail getting lost or whatever. So, if it pleases the board, I can certainly wait, y'all go into executive, but I'll have a few documents for Board President, Secretary, and a lot for Mr. Light. If you have any questions on the legal process, by all means, let me know. Otherwise, I'm, I'm happy for this district. Y'all have done a really good job.
If we can sign them now and they're...
Or I can wait, or I can wait.
I don't think it'll take real long to sign them.
Less than a couple of minutes.
I'll make a motion that we, Superintendent Joey Light, with the order of processing the bonds at a later date as long as each parameter in section 2C is met, i.e. the maximum amount of bonds that may be sold is 186 million, the maximum maturity date is February 15th, 2054, and the maximum true interest cost is 5.25%.
Second. Here you go. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you so much.
We'll be in touch.
Thank you all. Thanks.
Hey, just as a point of information, y'all need to know, he made LaDainian Thomason famous, I think. He was the blocking back for it. That's not exactly the story he told. He didn't tell it that way, but I, I just took a lot of...
Thank you. I like your story better. I couldn't beat him out.
Y'all be safe going back, guys.
All right, back on track. Okay, we are moving on to the audit report.
Yes, ma'am. We have Joey Elmore, who is our lead auditor. Is that, is that the term you have, or?
I have a lot of time.
He, he spent a lot of time in the district, let's put it that way, and so...
It's a pleasure. For those of you that haven't been, I'm Joey Elmore. I'm an audit manager with iBailey, and I do a lot of school district audits and local government audits. District audit, I think we're on year six with you guys.
You personally, you personally.
Yeah, it's been a pleasure working with y'all. But before I start, I have to say, audit takes a lot of... Before I start, I have to say, audit takes a lot of work all by the time and effort of the business office. It's significant. There's a lot of back and forth, there's a lot of diligence to get an audit done. See the big old packet in front of you there? It's 107-page document, and a lot of work that goes into that. A huge thank you to CAFR and a huge thank you to the business office team for all the work they do to make this thing go. So I'll give a quick summary of the audit results, and then kind of go over some of the numbers, and talk about a couple of the specifics on the results at the end. Overall, the audit went well. What you're looking at with the audit report is what your opinion is on the financial statements and how the single audit went. So the financial statements, you're going to have what's called an unmodified opinion, which means there was a clean opinion on the financial statements, which is the highest rating that a financial statement can receive. Then you also have a single audit, which goes over your federal funding, and if you're looking for any control or compliance deficiencies in your federal programs, anything where there's a violation of a grant or anything like that. We're going to look at that here, anything where the control structure wasn't working right. We didn't see anything like that in the federal programs. This year, we did have a couple of findings affecting the district's report on internal control of financial reporting. I'll go into a little more detail on those near the end, but the big picture is a clean audit opinion this year and on federal funding. If you turn to page two in the big packet, that's going to be your main report. A little bit more detail on this. Basically, with an audit, you have two parties. You have a management. Management's job is to present and prepare the financial statements in accordance with the accepted accounting principles, generally accepted accounting principles, and to do a system of internal controls that makes sure that that can happen. And then when we come in and we do the audit, we gain an understanding of that internal control structure so that we can do testing over the financial data that were presented to be able to give an opinion on the audit, on the financial documents, to say whether they're in compliance with GAAP or whether they're in compliance with these accounting standards. And so that's where you get the clean audit opinion. Everything was in compliance with the standards. There's no material misstatements that we noted in any areas. So that's as high as the rating goes. On page three of that report, you end up seeing, there's a new accounting standard this year for SBITAs. You'll hear that term thrown around some. It's subscription-based IT arrangements. So the district has a new liability in the liability section for anything that was a subscription-type technology arrangement. If you jump over to page 15, we'll start looking at some of the actual numbers for the year. This is as of the year that ended on August 31 of 2023. This page, number 15, is going to present a snapshot of the full government's assets and liabilities. So this is going to be on the full accrual basis of accounting. And the big difference on this report is you're going to see your capital assets. So this is your land, your long-term liabilities, your, anything that's, your buses, that kind of stuff, that's longer than one year in life. It's going to be on here as well as your debt. So that's going to be the bonds, the tax notes, the pension liability, and the OPEB liability. So what you have is the district was at 116.8 million this year in total assets. That decreased about 3.7 compared to last year. And the largest asset class in there is your capital assets, which is pretty standard. It's 105.3 million in capital assets this year, which makes up about 90% of the district's total assets. And that decreased about 3.6 million. You didn't have as much construction placed in service this year as you did the prior year. And so you just basically have depreciation expense on that. Your next largest asset class in there is your cash. You have about 4.1 million in the full government-wide financials as of August 31, and that decreased about 5.9 million compared to last year. Total liabilities, 65.3 million. And that's decreasing about 2 million from the prior year. So a lot of decreases in there in all the areas. Your largest liability that you're looking at is your bonds, your tax notes, and your leases, your pension liability and your OPEB. So this is all your long-term debt, basically. That's where your liabilities are the biggest. And then net position at the bottom of the page is going to be the amount that assets exceeds the liabilities. And that's going to be about 48.5 million this year, which actually increased about 400,000. If you turn over to page 17, this is where we look at the governmental funds. And this is, this particular page is a balance sheet that's useful for looking at short-term assets. Governmental funds are presented on the modified accrual basis, which basically means no long-term assets or liabilities. So you're not going to see any buses or land on here, no buildings, and on the other side of it, no debt. So you have similar, so you have about 12.6 million that you'll see in total assets on this one, which increased a little bit over last year, about 300,000. Cash is still the largest asset category here. Total liabilities on the modified accrual basis here. So for the total governmental funds, it's about 4.7 million. And that increase is driven by accrued wages payable. Y'all are growing, you have more staff in place, and so your accrued wage liability at the end of the year is a little bit higher. Your fund balance is the amount that your assets exceeds your liabilities on this page, so that's effectively the equity for these governmental funds, and it's about 7.8 million. That's a decrease of 438,000 from last year. That's going to be divided into several categories: restricted, committed, assigned for various activities like grant use and debt, and debt service. You also have some in there that's assigned for buses. One measure that you use that we've seen often to gauge the health of a district is to look at the unassigned fund balance and to compare it to your average monthly expenditures. TEA generally recommends between sometimes two, sometimes three times the amount of average monthly expenditures. So right as of this snapshot date, this is a snapshot point in time, it was about 1.4 times the monthly average expenditures in the general fund. And then over on page 19, you'll see your statement of revenues, expenses and changes in fund balance. This is your income statement for your governmental funds. And basically, this is just illustrating the change. So the $438,000 decrease in fund balance. You have 57.2 million was the actual in your revenues for the year. That 2 million, that was about 2 million higher than the prior year, and a lot of that came from the child nutrition revenue coming in. The local child nutrition revenue increased quite a bit over the prior year by about 900,000, as well as some campus activity funding that increased by about 500. Your total expenses actually decreased from the prior year to 57.8 million. And that was, again, I think, from what we saw driven by the Function 81, the facilities construction stuff decreasing from the prior year. So if we flip over, then I'll mention to you, as I mentioned, there were a couple of things that were a little bit different on this year's audit with, this is going to be page 79, you'll have an internal, a report over internal control over financial reporting. So as we do our audit, one thing we do is we look for anything in the internal control structure without doing a test of controls. We look for anything in the internal control structure that might indicate a weakness in internal controls. And one thing that we saw this year was a finding over financial reporting and material audit adjustments. And basically what that means, it was considered a material weakness in internal controls. That's not unusual in the year of an implementation of a new finance system, which is what happened this year, the switch from the system you guys were using, Skyward, to Cumulative. So in the process of performing the audit, there were certain audit adjustments that were made that were considered to be material, and so it's an automatic, it's a finding, an internal control finding. And basically what it's saying is, the district is preparing financial statements that are appropriate for its purposes on a monthly basis, and you guys are getting what you need. But when you compare the financial statements to GAAP requirements, there may not always be overlap until the audit takes place. And so we have to, we basically say, at any given point, there may not be GAAP-compliant financials, which is why the audit process goes to make sure that they are compliant with GAAP by the end of the process. There was also a second finding related to state allotment funding. We noted that, so the district has provided money for certain spending requirements: state comp ed, career in tech, bilingual, college readiness. Those are the ones that you'll see listed on the summary of finance if you ever read through one of those. The district has certain spending requirements for those amounts that they have to spend within the year. And this year, the district missed some of those milestones, and so they didn't spend quite as much of the funding as was received or as was required to be spent under those allotments. When a sufficient amount of the expense or a sufficient amount of the funds is not spent, it ends up being a noncompliance with laws and regulations finding. And often, we see TEA giving a three-year period for rectification of stuff like that. So if it's missed in a specific year, they could look on a three-year look-back period for many of those things. But it does show up in this year's financial statements because we tested on a one-year basis. They look at it on three-year, we look at it on one-year. So that'll show up. For more detail on either one of those, it's on page 88 and 89 in the financial statements. I'm not going to jump over to those right now. I am going to go to page 81, which is your single audit report. This year is, it was ESER and special education cluster. So IDEA B funding, the district receives quite a bit of ESER and quite a bit of IDEA B funding. And so we did some tests of compliance and internal controls there. Found everything to be as expected, no findings, no control issues, anything like that. So it's effectively a clean opinion over those, over compliance with the requirements of those programs. So overall, clean financial statements, clean federal statements, some findings related to financial statement internal controls and state allotment funding. And that's all I have for this evening. Any questions for me?
It's a lot of information. I will say that it never ceases to amaze me how much information they gain during this process. And so it's very important to us. The whole process is, what I would say is, an information-gaining process where we learn and hopefully they help us to become better. That's what we try to do every time we go to audit, or anytime we audit any program, whatever, we do want to get better at. Thank you, Joey, for your work and your team.
Absolutely. Thank you all for the opportunity to come out here. We appreciate y'all.
Do you need anything from us, Joey?
I have, I think, a signed paper that Yeah, you can email it to me. That'll be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have my paper. And we're moving on to CTE courses.
So Reagan is going to make the presentation. Let me just first comment. Just Barry and her team work really hard at trying to make sure that our CTE program is hitting on all cylinders. And when I say that, you know, there's things that show up. And this is one of those things where they're seeing a lack of people who are completing a program of study, and as they do a little research, they find, well, these kiddos are nervous about what it's going to do to their GPA. So because of that, Reagan's got this information.
Yeah, so every year, the TEA requires us to do a common local needs assessment in order to gain our federal Perkins funding. And so since they've started that, I've completed two. There'll be a new one this upcoming year that Mr. Reeves will, lucky for him, get to do. Anyway, but in those findings, it kind of shows us where our CTE learners are lacking compared to the state. And like most things, we knock things out of the park. But one of the areas where we score lower is our highly academic students are not considered CTE learners, which means concentrators and completers. That means they're taking AP courses. They're taking, you know, those courses that get them those extra points. And I don't know, I'm sure all of you made 100s in all of your classes, but even if they make a 100 in a regular weighted class, it can drag their GPA down because they're typically making 105 and 110s. And so we've come across students dropping out of some of these programs as they get older because it starts to hurt their GPA. Or they'll ask to be an aide because being an aide doesn't affect their GPA, but still take the coursework. Well, now we're losing CTE funding whenever they do that. So back in the fall, Ms. Alcorn and I started looking at that and kind of looking at which courses could be considered honors classes with the rigor and where we're seeing students drop and not taking those classes. And this is the list that we came up with. And I just said, with the advancement of rigor and the expectation in CTE courses, we feel that certain advanced, and advanced, yes.
This is the sheet you should have on your desk.
Advanced CTE courses, according to the state, are Level III and Level IV courses, where we get that higher-weighted funding. But it's also, like I said, considered advanced by the state. And we want to offer those at the honors level, which is five extra GPA points. Due to us making this, I want this to become effective this semester, but due to us doing it after the semester already started, this won't fall into the no pass, no play for UIL. That doesn't really matter, but it is a caveat that, once we're doing it in the middle of the semester. But once this passes next year, these will go into the category with our other honors classes where they won't be affected by no pass, no play either. So the courses that I have listed are veterinary medicine, which is in our animal science program, instructional practices, which is in our teaching and training program, health science theory, which is in healthcare therapeutic, the practicum in health science, and that covers our farm tech kiddos and our CNA kiddos. Scientific research and design, which is in our engineering program, and then securities and investments, which is in our accounting and financial services. Again, the way we came up with those are the classes that we feel like are rigorous, but we also saw those highly academic students dropping off and not finishing that coursework due to them wanting to go and take AP classes and get that weighted funding. So I'm just seeking approval for y'all to approve these to become honors classes. Any questions?
Thank you for catching this. And so we can hopefully look at this because I think it's very important.
Thank you. Yeah, I think so too.
I have my paper.
I'm just going to stay up here. And they're making me, apparently there's a football game on. Talking to my dad on the way up here, I was like, "Don't they know there's a football game tonight?" Okay, so we'll hustle through this. Wiley High School, and in the middle of the school year, at the end of last semester, we had 1,505 students. That 10th grade number really dropped, the 9th grade number rose, and it all just continues. Our counselors are moving and shaking constantly. Our core teachers last semester, they each got some PLC time, and they really found value in that. That's, I think, all the junior highs and some of the lower grades also did that, got subs for teachers in certain subject areas. We grouped them differently, but that allowed them to meet, to work collaboratively with each other, to vertically align, to go over data from the common assessments that they're given, and then make game plans. And so today, my teachers all set dates for another one in the spring, and they're excited to have that opportunity. So we're grateful for those subs going to come and do that. Aubrey Insights, I gave you an attachment in your packet, thank you. In your packet, that's a new program that we're using for data insights. I, Mr. Light, has let me kind of be the rep for the campuses because we probably have the most moving and shaking happening. And so that is one of the dashboards that we've built, just so you can see. It's a quick snapshot that we're excited to have, that I think in the future will give us a lot of good insight, that we can go and pull, but it takes a lot of time. And this will be a quick way to log in, look at what's going on even on that day because it should update nightly. It Takes a Pack is a really exciting program that we're bringing to our Wiley community. On February 1st, we're going to host, it's a Know Your Teen event called It Takes a Pack that came from a dog pack, or bulldogs. Get it? Okay. This event is for parents of teenagers, so you have parents who look behind the curtain of a teenager's life. We've partnered with APD, Betty Hardwick, Serenity House, Noah Project, local churches, and others to bring awareness to parents. Topics include social media, human trafficking, mental health awareness, fentanyl and drug awareness, and other resources available to our students and even our families in our community, and the real dangers that are often unknown to parents. This came about as we face things that come into our offices and we just say, "Parents don't know that's going on." And there is no discrimination. This is from the highest end of parents to the lowest-income parents. And so we're really excited about this. We're going to try and have some really cool door prizes. This will be a free event, open to any and all parents. These events often don't have a huge turnout, and so we're taking that challenge because we think this is really important. Again, I can't stress that enough, but we have a good team up at the high school that's working on getting that together, and you'll start seeing things pushed out about that event. UIL academics, our academic team continues to win trophies, scholarships, and medals. They win sweepstakes at those big contests. They'll win the big school, then they go and take on all the small schools, and they win the small schools. We've got kids that are brought home scholarships anywhere from $500 to $2,000. Arnav Gara-Pali, Corbin Ellis, Anthony Tovar, and Annabelle Gertzer. Arnav Gara-Pali, Corbin Ellis, Anthony Tovar, and Annabelle Gertizer are some of the most recent winners. They'll have district, we'll host the Valentine's Classic in February, and then they'll go to district in March. Along with UIL academics are our debate students, and we have, let's see, I'm skipping down, Carson Wells and Josh Corrigan are headed to state next week for state debate. So good luck to those guys. And Ms. McMillan is their coach this year, and she's done a wonderful job with them. We have Taffy students going to state. They competed well at the area contest back last semester. Seventeen students advanced to state, and that will be held at Round Rock. State qualifying students, Sergeant Thompson, Madeline Williams, Natalie Kramer, Kaylee Harwick, Reagan Rawlings, Angel Hines, Tara Clement, Maddie Bearden, Isabella Smith, Josie Fletcher, Kayla St. James, Taylor Wood, Kalen Dahl, Brooke Richards, Josh Corrigan, Quinn Griffin, and Peyton Lunsford. These are our Texas Association of Future Educators, so we really hold them in this nice protected area, and we try and grow that program. Ms. Johnson's done a wonderful job with that program. Wiley Swim and Dive Team, coached by Coach Pacheco, and Ms. Schlot continue to make big waves. They won the Abilene Invitational Meet, the Abilene High and Abilene Cooper. You like that? I don't think in diving you're supposed to make big waves, but whatever. There's a belly flop maybe. But they won the Abilene Invitational, and that's where Cooper and Abilene High combined their teams into one team, and then it's against us, and we beat them still. District is at the end of January in Lubbock, so that's always exciting. Those suckers are efficient. If you've never been to a swim meet, if you've got curly hair, it's going to get curly in there, and they go fast. So those are fun to watch if you've never watched one of those. Caught Being a Bulldog, we've had several students caught being a bulldog. This program started four years ago to encourage students and teachers to exhibit bulldog-like characteristics. According to the AKC, bulldogs are kind, courageous, full of tenacity, friendly, and loyal companions. Each month, whenever they get nominated, they get announced on the announcements, and then they also get a certificate and their picture in the Wiley Weekly. TMEA All-State, Faith Brent placed third chair at the TMA All-State Choir pre-area auditions, qualifying her for their final round. That took place recently, and I think she did great at All-State. I know that we also had over this past weekend, two band, Pure Gold Band members made All-State Band, which is huge. Those are big, huge accomplishments, so we're proud of our Fine Arts Department for that. Bulldog Christmas Market was a huge success. They brought in, once again, over $20,000 of revenue in three hours. But bigger than that are the personal interactions and the learning opportunities that are presented for our students and the community that it creates for our Wiley community. Wiley FFA Broadcasting Team placed fourth at the Texas State FFA LDE Contest. That team consisted of Tanner Jones, Macy Woolsey, Cole Killian, and Ag teacher Mr. Smith. So congrats to them. Woo, woo! Woo. Oh, he said woo. Last December, the Christmas festivities were everywhere. Jazz band played, CNA students made goodie bags for our residents at Windcrest, MedLife delivered meals on wheels, PALS delivered over 1,200 pairs of socks to Love and Care Ministries, the show choir sang, Christmas scrams all around town, and then Pure Gold Band and Wiley Concerts had really wonderful Christmas concerts. So thank you for all the extra time that they put in to bring in that cheer to our community. And then the last thing is, this upcoming semester, Wiley High School's going to offer a college prep course called Texas College Bridge. The program is offered by TEA and partners with over 80 post-secondary colleges and universities. Successful completion of this course will deem the student college-ready, which is also CCMR-ready, which gets them that point for CCMR. Ready in English and Math, being college-ready negates the need for remedial coursework and pre-college coursework for those students. I said last thing, but I had another page. I'm nearly done. All right. School Day PSAT, for the first time ever, we're going to host the School Day PSAT on March 7th. The benefits of that, our students don't have to get up early on the Saturday to go take the PSAT, or the SAT, I'm sorry, and it's also offered at a lower cost. And so we hope more students will take that test. Lots of schools are moving to that. So our counselors, I'm grateful for them, and Ms. Noble for doing that. I just wanted to note that behind every great thing that we talk about is a teacher or a sponsor or a coach. And I think that's important to know that there are people, yes, maybe they get a stipend, maybe they don't get a stipend, but more importantly, they're pouring their heart and soul and grit and passion for whatever they're teaching those kiddos to go and achieve and to make our district look really good. And sometimes they're behind the scenes and don't get the recognition. So yeah, all these great things is a teacher. So thank you to all them.
All right. Wiley West Junior High, we finished off the semester to 1,000 students. Sixth and seventh grades seem to be our bigger classes. Attendance area is 94%, almost 95% overall. Lee Classes, talked to you about those. Basically, it's like our junior pals. They will start going into fifth and sixth grade classes every Wednesdays. They start this on the 24th, and basically they'll just be peer tutoring our fifth and sixth grade students, working with them. Kindness Club, did some community project. They went to Wesley Court in December and did some things there, sang Christmas carols and did some different stuff there with them. Dyslexia Club was actually created this year by Ms. Cothran. It's been a really good thing. I think we have about 67 students that are part of Dyslexia Club. You can be a dyslexic student or not be a dyslexic student. It's open to everybody. But she took those students, we had, actually, there's probably more than 67, but we took 67 students to the early childhood and also to the West Elementary, and those students read Christmas books to those classes. So thank y'all for opening your doors and allowing them to come. And I have a dyslexia student that's a part of that, enjoyed going and just seeing them read. And it's just kind of cool to see our dyslexia students growing with their reading because a lot of dyslexic students don't like to read. So going and doing that in front of people was a really great thing, and Ms. Cothran's done a really good job with that club. Bulldog Bridge is there. I'm going to skip on down to academics, UIL. Last time we met, I think we were meeting on the day we were hosting our UIL event. So I have some completions there, sixth through eighth grade. We didn't necessarily score, I mean, there were scores for fifth grade, but there wasn't like an overall winner, but sixth through eighth grade students competed at Wiley East Junior High and the Wiley West Junior High scored 525 points total, which was 107 more points than the second-place team. So Wiley West Junior High did a great job there at the UIL. And thank you to Mr. Goodenough, opened up his doors and hosted that and let us come there. We did the award ceremony the week after. We had 174 students compete in fifth through eighth grade, and 98 of them finished in the top six. So great job with all our students and our teachers that coached those events. We crowned a Spelling Bee on December 6th champion, which was Crane Buddha is his name, and he will be competing on February 24th at Harden Simmons for a chance to go to the National Scritt Spelling Bee. He's a fun kid, so if you've never met Crane, you need to meet Crane, and then just go watch him perform. It's pretty fun. RLA field test, we will do on February 7th. Benchmarks are coming up in the end of February. We're going to do our, I think it's going to be a third year that we've done our eighth grade college day. We'll do that in March. I put that in here because I didn't know if I'd talked to y'all before then, but that's where our eighth graders go and visit local colleges. And they also go to the high school in the afternoon and visit the high school and get information about the high school so they can start preparing for classes to put in for their classes their freshman year. TMSCA, I did not put that on there, but they are hitting the ground running. We have practice meets in January and February and qualifying meets in February and March for the state competition, which is in San Antonio. So we're excited about that. We usually always have really good people there. And then TMSC winners, that she mentioned, all those ones that were going to UIL, and so that's a lot of them that do the math and different stuff and continue on at the high school level. Athletics, basketball, and full-court press. We started in November, and basketball season will finish up in February. Track will start after that. Attendance golf and swimming are moving into their spring seasons. Theater production, we have January 19th and 20th is Elf Junior that will be at the PAC. Band and choir as well did a great Christmas concerts, and they're moving and preparing on for their spring UIL. Information down there about just other activities, we had a young lady in fifth grade by the name of Chloe Jonas. She, we had all our fifth graders participate in the Taylor Electric Billboard competition, and she actually won. And so her art that she did will be placed on those billboards. I think there's actually already one on 1750, so excited about that. And then one thing I didn't put on here, it's not necessarily education-related, but we do also have another student. If you saw the Wiley Grow, Elsie Stark is competing into the Kid Baking Championship, and she's a fifth grader at Wiley West Junior High. It was actually filmed while she was going into fourth grade, so she already knows what happened, but she can't tell anybody. And that comes on every Monday night, so I'm missing a Kid Baking Championship right now, not the National Football Championship. And so you might catch her. It started last Monday on the 1st. It's awesome to watch them compete, and she was actually in the top three this last, the first episode, so check that out on Food Network.
You sample any of her baking?
No, she did. Cookies, like she would sell cookies inside.
Yeah, she does. I have hers personally.
Oh, you have?
No, sir.
Mr. Minette did a full-court press. I'm going to run my two-minute offense because there is a game going on. Thank you. I'm going to run the two-minute offense, so here we go. I feel like I was just in front of y'all. We were here in November, and then we went to school for a couple of days, and we had Thanksgiving break, and then we went to school for a couple of days, then we had Christmas break, so I feel like we just did this, but we'll do it again. 548 total students. We've got some new ones coming tomorrow. We've already talked to parents and we're excited about our new students. We did some end-of-six-weeks exams in December. We also had our Spelling Bee, Aria Ngar Lapati. He's a seventh grader. He's our champion. He won it as a fifth grader, and then he came in third as a sixth grader and was super upset because he was going to get it again, and he didn't, and so this time he like swamped everybody. So congrats to him. He was pretty awesome. Today, we had some great data curriculum planning meetings with our teachers. Shout out to Ms. Spencer, Ms. South, and Holly Cooper, who kind of led those. Pretty awesome. Something that's happened since I was here the last time, our eighth-grade US History students went to Mr. Bacon's campus, and they did American Revolution puppet shows, which is really pretty awesome. They taught Mr. Bacon's students about the American Revolution, and they were doing it in a puppet show, the puppets that they had made, so it was pretty cool. Our overall attendance were at 96.52%, which I guess is okay. Our functional academic students went to another Unified Field Day since the last time I spoke to you. They've done two of those this year. Ms. Hamilton does a great job getting her students out to do those things. Basketball is happening at our place as well. The teams are, our eighth-grade teams, boys and girls, really good. Seventh-grade teams, little bit of a work in progress, but they're getting better every week. Our band and choir had their holiday concerts in December. Hey, next year, if, when Thanksgiving's over and you don't quite feel like you're in the Christmas spirit, hey, go to a junior high band or choir concert. I'm just telling you. It'll crawl all over you, the Christmas spirit. You can't leave there without it. So I would encourage you next year, if you get through Thanksgiving, you're like, "I'm not really feeling Christmas," hey, come to either one. I mean, you probably want to come to East, but either one. But either one. Either one. Yeah, come to both, and you'll catch the Christmas spirit. I just guarantee you will. And shout out to Ms. Lees, Mr. De La Garza, and Ms. Savari for putting on those great concerts. We also have a musical coming up in January, the 26th and 27th. Cinderella will be happening at the PAC, Wiley East Junior High. Our UIL for band and choir, they're going to have some practice meets in late February and early March, and then in late March, they will have their actual UIL competition. Ms. Jones continues to display some great student artwork in our hallways. If you are on campus, please come down that big middle hallway, and you'll see some great student artwork. And in April, we will have our Art Walk, and you guys have got to come to that. I'll let you know when it's happening. It lasts about an hour and a half. It's one night, and there are hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of student art pieces that are displayed. So I'll let you know when that's coming. We've done it twice, and this will be our third annual. We continue to recognize students for their acts of kindness. Over 140 students have been recognized. Blessed Bulldog, that happened across all the campuses in December. Ms. Bollinger on our campus, our community and schools representative, she did a great job organizing all that on our campus. We continue to try to encourage our staff with staff morale. We did some fun activities leading up. We had a Five Days of Christmas where we did fun stuff. We had our fifth annual Wiley East Junior High Shrimp Boil. I mentioned our thankfulness chain the last time I stood in front of you. It was almost finished, and it got finished, and for about a month, we had that beautiful thankfulness chain hanging in our hallways. Bulldog Bridge will happen on Friday. The whole school will be participating. Self-management is the theme for this week. We do that six times a year. And the last thing I'm going to share with you, early December, so shortly after I was here with you guys, I got a text from a former student, not a Wiley East Junior High student, but one of my students who graduated in 2000. She sent me a text, and in the text, it was a screenshot of one of her classmates' Facebook pages. And that, her classmate has a student at Wiley East Junior High. And that, and it said, this was what the parent wrote on Facebook. I don't know if this is a district-wide or more of a Wiley East Junior High thing, but I love it. Parents rarely hear the good stuff because teachers are so busy with the day, with their day-to-day in their classrooms. And she took a picture of one of the postcards that are, I tell you all about that all the time, the good stuff postcards, and she posted that on Facebook. And then my former student, from way back, in the waybacks, when my hair was brown and I was a lot younger, she sent that to me, and she said this, "Thought you'd like seeing this. You breed great culture." Hey, I can't think of a better compliment to get from former Bulldogs than "you breed great culture." And hey, as we embark on this bond election, hey, I know there's going to be a lot of nerves with you guys. Maybe y'all are over the nerve part of it. I don't know. There are naysayers. There are going to be some negativity about, well, why are we doing this, and why did we decide to do that? Hey, just, hey, don't forget, and don't ignore, but please embrace that this is, it's historic, we're moving forward, and take some time to enjoy the moment over these next couple of years as all this stuff happens. And I guarantee you, people from the class of 2000 and people from those classes of 90, I saw another former student, she graduated in 1995. I saw her out at Jim Ned. My wife took me out there. She was recruiting a kid over the holidays, and we saw this, she's 45-year-old woman now, I guess, but she came over and talked to us for a long time. She graduated in 1995 from Wiley and still is proud that she was a Bulldog. So hey, all this stuff y'all are doing, hey, in 20 years and 30 years, our current students are going to feel the same way about Wiley because of some of the things y'all are doing. So hey, thanks for all you do. Thanks for letting us do what we do, and it might have been two and a half minutes.
Okay. The Board Meeting Workshop?
Yes, we had talked about this prior, but just make sure you get February 20th on your calendar. That is going to be starting at noon, and we will meet here. Oh, we're going to, actually, we are going to meet in a different location. We're in Mr. Vaughn's meeting room. So it's right by the Puppet Academy, so we'll get a chance to see the Puppet Academy. We'll get you there. It's in the other building. Yeah, it's over the bridge. It's not a bridge too far, though. I've seen that movie.
All right, calendar update?
Yes, ma'am. So y'all, in the packet, you've got one of the original, and that's what I'm going to call Option A at this point. You want to just pass that around? That's Option A. All this rotate, evolves around the Veterans Day holiday that we gave. We got a lot of good feedback from some staff that really like what we do on Veterans Day. They want to be in school on Veterans Day. So I've given several different looks. Option A and Option B are still student holidays on the 11th. Option C actually shows us being in school on the 11th. And so my desire is to get some more feedback from staff on that. I just found that interesting. They were very... They were very protective of that November 11th being a school day and wanting to be with the kids and hosting these programs that honor veterans. I don't know exactly where that will go. Again, that's some feedback that I got from our, some staff after, you know, I think I shared with you at our last meeting that our committee, our District Advisory Committee had said, you know, they liked that, but then they went back and shared that and got some additional feedback. So we'll continue to vet that. That'd be the only difference on those three calendars is really how we deal with November 11th, and we'll continue to gather that information. So I just thought that was an interesting thing where my thought was that was a good day to take off. I don't think they're necessarily arguing that that day not be a holiday, but they feel very attached to those programs that they're having on Veterans Day. So we'll continue to keep you informed as that information goes out.
And last thing, 24th school board election?
So in the packet, you have the information, Place Six and Place Seven are up. That's Andy and Cameron. First date of file for a place on the ballot is January 17th, so that's coming up. Last date of file is February 16th, and the school board election is Saturday, May 6th. Oh, I'm sorry, 4th, 4th, yeah, Saturday, May 4th.
All right. Okay.
Okay, thank y'all for being here. Don't tell us the score.
Yeah, don't update us with the scores.